Ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our City Council meeting of April 15th, 2015. And at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Chief, would you please lead us in the flag slip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. City Clerk Maloney, roll call, please.
Faria?
Here.
Lewis? Silveira?
Present.
Stonegrove? Falalta?
Here. We have a quorum. And just as a quick announcement, Elizabeth Stonegrove, our City Councilwoman, is not here this evening, but for good reason. She, the birth of her baby, was it last week, Steve?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, and seven pounds, 15 ounces, 14 ounces? Is that close enough? Okay. Right around there. Okay, a little boy. So she's here, she's absent for good reason, and, and everyone is doing fine.
There you go. Pass it around, but I want it back.
Well, you can pass it around your cellphone?
Well...
I like to see if you get it back.
Cute baby, though.
Okay. Let's go on to item four, approval of agenda. Consideration of Approval of Agenda, item four. Mr. Silveira?
So moved.
Ms. Faria?
Second.
Moved by Silveira, second by Faria, to approved agenda stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and please remember, if you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Do we have anyone who would like to speak at the public forum?
My name is David So, I've lived here all my life in Los Banos. I am, I'm not a good public speaker, so, how are you, Mr.?
Very good.
I'm not a good public speaker, so I'd just like to read it. I am here today on behalf of my neighbors and farmers and the people of Los Banos. I am happy with the fact that the people of Los Banos have shown a common sense attitude to problems and how to solve them. I read in the papers last week that Governor Jerry Brown feels that Los Banos has been using too much water, therefore you have got to cut your usage by 35 percent. Welcome to the real world that we farmers have been living in for the last few years. How does it feel to know that you rank several notches below that of the Delta Smell, one of the most useless fish on the planet Earth when it comes to water priority? Believe me, you will never get used to it. The Los Banos area is fortunate in the fact that our aquifier is in good shape. This is very important, because all of the water used in Los Banos is from wells. If you want to dig a domestic well in this area, dig 200 feet, you will probably have plenty of water. There are areas in the valley that because of the drought and excessive agricultural pumping, to dig a domestic well, you have to dig at least 1,000 feet, and you may not get good water. If you drive a mile and a half south of Mercy Springs Road, then turn left on Phillips and go two miles, you will in that area find at least nine new agricultural wells that have been dug in the last several years. Even though only half are operating, within the last several months, at least seven of us in the area, because of lowering water table, have had to lower our pumps and motors in our domestic wells. None of the new wells are, are on any of our properties, which means that these wells are drawing water from a large area, including the aquifier beneath Los Banos. The water in the aquifier belongs to everyone in the area. The owners of these wells have not asked for or paid anyone for using other people's water. That is not honest business practices. These big wells pump on the average at least a million gallons of water a day. The new wells in our area are all for new plantings of trees. We in our area are very worried about what will happen to our water table when all these new wells go into production. The thing that no one is talking about is how long is the drought going to last? Therefore, we have to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. We in Los Banos are fortunate to have CCID to work with. These are very capable people such as Chris Fagunas, the director of this area and management, Chris White and his staff. Los Banos has got to check the water table on a monthly basis, and if it is getting drawn down because of the drought and overpumping, then it has to curb, put a curb on wells that have been dug since the drought began. You should work with CCID, they will tell you the laws and rules regulating, regulating water usage. The important thing that I want to emphasize is that no one knows how long the drought will last, and that at the present time, water is our most valuable asset. We hope that in the future, you don't have to say, "Dug on it." We should have taken care of this before it became such a problem. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Think about it.
Thank you, free comments.
Does anyone know how long the drought is gonna last? And you, I'll tell you, if it lasts any longer, water will make gold and everything else look like dirt, but it is. So now is the time to think about it, and don't wait. Somebody said on TV the other day, might be beginning of the 500-year drought. Hopefully, it isn't, but we don't know. So, okay?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Eric Lamone, resident of Los Banos, employer of public services. Last, last meeting, the mayor mentioned something about the cleanup being important, and it's rightfully so. It keeps debris off public right-of-way, it, it makes obviously public works, lives a whole lot easier, as well as myself and, and the workers. So, so it's important. So I have some cleanup totals after three things to talk about tonight. The tonnage of the spring cleanup, general refuse was 108.46 tons. Tires collected was 8.78 tons collected, metals 7.3, 7 tons, and e-waste was 3.12 tons. So that was quite significant. One of our bigger turnouts, it was absolutely amazing. I didn't wanna say anything about it last time, because I didn't have the information. I thought it'd be right to let you guys know offhand. Also, I wanted to remind our residents tonight about their carts, and I see a lot of carts that are out, they're visible to public, some people, they, they're at the curb, and I wanted to, to, to have a friendly reminder and let them know that, you know, I'm gonna read something here. City codes govern how and when you may place your trash, recycling, and green waste carts out for service. Cars must be placed at the curb no later than 6:00 PM, the day before your service, Sunday 6:00 PM for Monday service, etc. You must remove your carts no later than 11:50 PM on the date of service. You must store your carts in an area where they are not visible from the street. Cars not placed out prior to 6:00 AM on the service day may be missed, so just make sure, you know, typically, we go back, so I mean, as a courtesy. So if you're, obviously, another big thing, too, is that a lot of carts are being stolen for whatever reason, transience, you know, who knows? You can call the police non-emergency number at 827-7070 to obtain a case number, and every, every situation is a little different, so more often than not, we just bring it out there, but, but, you know, just in case, you know, we try to make it easier for the public to, to get a case number, and then, or call City Hall, 827-7000 for a replacement. I wanted to bring up, talked to Jenny Halpin of MCAG, and I'm sure all of you guys obtained the, this, I mean via mail, email, Hazardous Waste Event Collection, Saturday, April 18th. I don't see a, a time, but it's gonna be at the Highway 59 landfill. Imagine it's probably from open to close, they generally open at 7:00 AM to, to, to 2:00 PM. For chemical transport, anything serious, you can contact 722-4228 for more information and schedule and time for drop-off. Anyway, just general information, paint thinners, gas, you know, doesn't mention anything about any sharps material, but anyway, so just some knowledge. And also, while I'm here, I wanted to, obviously, we've got some people here for 4H and FFA, my kids are highly involved with it, and I just wanted to say that I, I wanna encourage residents to go out there and, and see how hard these kids work, because they do work tremendous. I'm with these kids every day, seven days a week, and, and it teaches them discipline and, and obviously budgeting, you know, money-wise, because stuff can get real expensive. The reward in the end is tremendous, because it's potentially, they can make good money price per pound. For instance, we have sheep, so it's a seven-day, a week job, there's no days off. Unfortunately, these kids are out there every day, so I just wanted to give them kudos. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Hi, Ashley Williams, resident of Los Banos, also with Habitat for Humanity, and I just wanted to extend the invitation to everyone here and the public, including City Council members and City Manager, to our home dedication that's happening this Saturday. It's gonna be at 1:00 PM, and if you can't make it at 1:00, there's gonna be an open house at 537 M Street, the location of the home dedication, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. And it's basically an event where we're welcoming home the, the next Habitat Partner family who's purchasing the house, who's dedicated and put more than 500 hours of their own time into building, or to rehabbing, rehabbing the house. And it's just a pretty neat experience to watch folks become homeowners and, and celebrate with them. So, anyway, it's a great event for Habitat for Humanity, and we just encourage as many of you guys to come out as possible. So, thank you, all are invited.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, birth of Faria, Los Banos Chamber of Commerce and Los Banos resident. Just a couple of reminders of upcoming events for the chamber. Tomorrow, we will be cutting the ribbon for Spacetail Cricket Wireless at 2:00. Everyone is invited. They are located at 1313 Pacheco in Sweet C. And then on Saturday is our annual downtown spring street fair. It starts at 8:30 till 3:00. We have over 115 vendors signed up, and there's still that are, that have faxed applications in, so we're gonna squeeze everybody in. Then on Monday, the 20th, beginning at noon, we are offering, in partnership with the Los Banos Enterprise, a social media marketing seminar, and that's gonna be held at Espanias. It's a free seminar, and lunch is available, should you like, with the Espanias Fajita buffet. And then on Thursday, we're welcoming another new member, Posh Boutique Salon. They're located right downtown, 1005 Sixth Street, and their grand opening and ribbon cutting is at 4:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Francisco Vasquez Jr., I'm a resident of Los Banos. And today, I'm just here to issue a few thank-yous. I'm here representing my father, my pastor, Francisco Vasquez Sr., and our church, Vision Familiar. On April 5th, 2015, as a church, we celebrated our 15th anniversary of parading through the city of Los Banos with approximately 350 adults and youth, with children, with the sole purpose of praying and blessing our city, its residents, school system, businesses, and government. We firmly believe in the word of God written in Jeremiah 29:7, saying, "Also seek the peace and the prosperity of the city to which I have carried you. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you too will prosper." As a church, we believe we have the responsibility of continuously praying and asking God for our city, just as the government has the responsibility of caring for the people it's over. So in this attempt, last month, we advised our 24-hour prayer chain, that is currently comprised of 72 total hours, that is 72 different people praying continuously around the clock, beginning Monday night through Thursday night, to focus their prayers, just as I'm sure all the people of our city, in their prayers, to reduce the crime in our city. Now, not only do, we don't believe in coincidences, but we do believe in cause and effect. So it was great to hear when our police chief announced that, just last month, crime has gone down in our city. Even though I believe in the power of prayer, I also believe in the hard work of those that make this possible. So we would like to thank our current local government officials for allowing us to freely express our faith by parading through the streets of our city. We would like to thank the police department and its volunteers for always, in the 15 years, we have been parading to render their excellent service through this. Not only do we see the protection and security the police bring to our city, but also their willingness to serve the community. The volunteers did an excellent job this year in providing their service for our church and the parade that we, that we hosted. We would also like to thank the Los Banos Fire Department and volunteers that in previous years have taken out the fire trucks from the bay and greeted the entire congregation with lights and sirens as we walked by the station, or have taken the fire trucks to our facilities on October 31st for our yearly kids' festival, that now we have hosted for over 10 years, and now together with New Beginnings Church, in the last three years, has also partnered up with us in doing. Every year, God willing, as we continue to do this, we would just like everyone who would like to have their voice heard to join us, and for everyone to know that as a church, Vision Familiar will always continue to pray for our city, for this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and move on to item six, presentations. And the first one, 6A, presentation by the Heritage Foundation regarding the Merced County Spring Fair. I like Los Banos Fair, but what are you gonna do? So who's here to represent the, the Heritage Foundation? Come on up. Okay? Mr. Silveira, do you want to?
Just gonna introduce him.
Okay? We'll get you a microphone.
Yeah. Yeah, turn around and look that way. There you go. I've seen this before. There we go.
Mr. Silveira is one of our fair board directors, and he's here tonight, knowing the, having personal knowledge of all the young ladies up here, the fine representation from Los Banos, and so he will be introducing everyone.
Well, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, but just as a quick introduction to what they're here for and what they're doing. So I'm on the fair board, as well as on the Heritage Foundation board, and for those of you that aren't familiar, a few years back, the state cut its funding to fairs. And so we, we saw the need as a fair board to, we needed to make up those funds. And for our local fair, it was somewheres in the neighborhoods, between $180,000 and $200,000 a year of funding that we lost from the state of California. So we started a Heritage Foundation, and the very first year, it was put together rather quickly, and with a few letters sent out and calling a few people, we raised $40,000 in a, in a short amount of time. So then we had another year to really work on it, and we brought in and went out and tried to get some corporate sponsors, if you will, and last year, we raised close to $300,000. And so, and part of that money, 10% of all that money raised, automatically goes back to our youth and scholarships. So as we're going down this road, we felt like we needed a group of the people that were trying, you know, were trying to protect our fair for the next generation. And so we wanted to get their perspective and what the fair meets, means to them. So we put together this Heritage Foundation presentation team, and they're gonna give you guys a little presentation, so I'm gonna have them introduce themselves, and then they'll start with their presentation. Thank you.
I'm Cory Filasky, I'm 15 years old and a freshman at Los Banos High School.
My name is Hannah Young, and I'm a 17-year-old junior at Los Banos High School.
My name's Isabella Alberdi, and I'm 16, and I'm a sophomore at Los Banos High School.
My name is Paige Maniz, I'm a junior at Los Banos High School, and I'm 16 years old.
My name is Peyton Brazil, I'm 17 years old and a junior at Los Banos High School.
My name is Andrea Pinada, and I am a 17-year-old senior at Los Banos High School.
Henry Miller came to California in the 1850s with a hard work ethic and a passion for agriculture. In 1890, he hosted the first May Day picnic, which soon after became a tradition of thanking the community and increasing awareness to the agriculture industry. This tradition is alive today, as the mission of the May Day Fair is to create memories worth repeating by providing quality entertainment, education, and courteous service in a safe facility.
Every single person in Los Banos has their own personal story about the Merced County Spring Fair. During fairtime, our whole city erupts with excitement over the food booths, exhibits, and all the different attractions. Fair is a time that brings our community together over greasy food and tractor pulls. Everyone has their stories to share about their experience at the fair. Mine all started in a brand-new pair of sparkle boots and a little lamb I walked around the Pee Wee Showmanship ring. That day, I sparkled in those boots 13 years ago. I could not have been more excited to win the Best Dressed Award. This year will be my eighth year showing livestock at the fair, and outside of the show ring, I represent the fair by wearing the sparkle crown of Miss May Day.
Families mark their calendars each year and clear their schedules for fairtime, whether it's simply to attend and enjoy exhibits, food, or entertainment, or to compete in fair competitions. Fair memories last for a lifetime. As I come from a long line of people passionate about agriculture and our May Day Spring Fair, my family has been participating in May Day since I can remember. My friends and family tell me how much they love their animals, and this being my first year showing, I see the hard work that is put into raising livestock. The May Day Spring Fair has shaped me and our ag society through the teachings of tradition, responsibility, and small-town values.
Over 125 years later, over 5,000 youth toured Little Hands and Henry Miller Farm, which emphasizes our most valuable industry, agriculture. Even though California ranks number one in agriculture, it is surprising how many people do not know where their food and fiber comes from. The youth can take a walk through Henry Miller Farm to pet animals for the very first time, or take a drive on a tractor through Little Hands to plant corn, or to even see where their eggs they ate for breakfast came from. A challenge is an offer to increase inability or skill. The agriculture industry faces one of its biggest challenges today, such as the lack of resources and specifically the drought. The May Day Fair challenges over 5,000 youth to raise livestock or build and create agricultural mechanics and home economics projects in hopes of winning that blue ribbon. However, the May Day Fair faces the biggest challenge behind the scenes, as Governor Jerry Brown has cut over $200,000 from county fairs due to budget cuts and the downward spiral of horse racing. As we face this challenge, we need your help to make our fair stay the true May Day Fair that Henry Miller made long ago, instead of just a carnival of rides and games. Let's give the May Day Fair the opportunity to highlight agriculture and the leaders of tomorrow through the youth by offering, offering ribbons, scholarships, and supporting Little Hands and Henry Miller Farm as hands-on experiences and not just something the future will read about in history books.
We all know about the Heritage Foundation and how it preserves our fair. In 2014, over $35,000 were awarded in scholarships to our local youth. In that same year, we graduated our first Heritage Foundation presentation team, in hopes of them accomplishing great things in their lives and contributing back to our most valuable industry, agriculture. All of us who know and love the May Day Fair have an opportunity and an obligation to sh-... share our stories like we are doing right now. I believe we can take the May Day Fair to greater heights. When Henry Miller held his first May Day picnic in eighteen-ninety, he probably never imagined that his beloved tradition would one day turn into the Merced County Spring Fair. This annual event highlights agriculture in our daily lives. We need to share our stories and support agriculture in the more urban areas. We need to keep four-H and FFA members contributing back to agriculture and educating the hunger public, and why growing food and fiber in our valley is so important. In agriculture, we have all. It's safe, it's fresh, it is reliable, it is renewable, it is farm-to-table in our backyard. We are your best environmental partner. By supporting the Heritage Foundation of the Merced County Spring Fair, you are ensuring that Henry Miller's legacy will live on. Join us to cultivate leaders and preserve the rich agricultural heritage valued by all.
So in closing, I want to say we have a pretty awesome set of future leaders in agriculture up here, and so that's what we have to look forward to as people in agriculture. I'm in agriculture, maybe a lot of the people in this room and a lot of people watching in one way or another are involved in agriculture industry. So I want to thank them for being here tonight and give them one more big round of applause because they do an awesome job at public speaking and getting our word out there on why agriculture is so important to us locally and to this valley, and for that matter, the state, the country, and the world. Thank you, ladies.
Turn it off. Okay, our next item is six B, proclamation recognizing Volunteer Week. And could I please have the members of the vital come forward? I'm going to emphasize this in the proclamation, but since two thousand and three, these individuals and others have donated thirty-six thousand five hundred hours of service to the city of Los Vanos. And from personal note, we cannot get along without them. They are just individuals who have dedicated their life to Los Vanos, have stayed in Los Vanos, and have given back all the time that they've been here. And with that, I proudly read this proclamation, recognizing National Volunteer Week, whereas one of America's greatest national resources is its volunteers and human resources they devote towards a healthy, productive, and humane society. Throughout the year, local citizens sign up to assist the Los Vanos Police Department Vital, Volunteers Interacting to Advance Law Enforcement, and the Los Vanos Volunteers for Animals. Since its inception of the vital program in two thousand and three, members have donated thirty-six thousand five hundred hours of service to the city of Los Vanos. Vital volunteers provide services such as information and fingerprinting booths during events, crowd and traffic control, park and school safety patrol, graffiti abatement, evidence management, statistical reporting, taxi licensing, DUI checkpoint assistance, clerical assistance, and emergency call-outs. Vital volunteers have been called at all hours to assist with major problems such as power outages, fire, gas leaks, locating missing children, and much more. The Los Vanos Volunteers for Animals open the local shelter every Saturday from twelve PM to four PM for adoptions and work in conjunction with animal rescues to transfer dogs and cats who have not yet found a home. In two thousand and fourteen, the Los Vanos Volunteers for Animals donated over five thousand five hundred hours of service to the city of Los Vanos. Each year, these volunteers give freely of their time and energy, only asking for a smile and a thank you for their many hours of service. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Vanos recognize and take great pleasure in honoring the vital volunteers of Los Vanos Volunteers for Animals during the National Volunteer Week, April twelfth through April eighteenth, and convey sincere gratitude and appreciation for their dedication, selflessness, and compassionate efforts. Thank you so much for what you do, Volunteers for Animals, thank you. And please, as long as you are able, you are welcome in the city of Los Vanos, at the police department, and to Volunteers for Animals, and we just love having you here. Thank you so much for everything that you've done. Hey, do you want to say a few words?
Not really.
Oh, not really? Okay. Well, I'll say, I'll say, I'll say a couple of words for you, and a couple of words I would say is that if you're interested in volunteering, I see a church group here, and if you're interested in volunteering, I will tell you that the background check is just as stringent as it would be for a police officer, because you have access to many, many records that no one else would have. And the police chief would tell you the same thing, that if you are interested in volunteering to take care of animals or to volunteer at the, for vital volunteers, we would love to have you. And I know these individuals would love to have you also and join their family. So please let us know, and you can join by, or thinking of joining, contacting our police department and asking to speak to one of the dispatchers or to the police chief himself. Thank you. Okay. Okay, the next one is proclamation recognizing the month of April as Call Before You Dig Month. Now, we're gonna explain this. Now, the person here to accept this is our former councilwoman, Anna Bellotti-Brooks, and not to say that she dug a hole when she was here as the city councilperson, but this is safe digging. Would you come forward, Anna? In fact, she was an excellent councilperson. I would know because I was her junior high principal. And on behalf of the city council, we would like to present this proclamation, and people would say, "Why are we presenting a proclamation to dig safely?" Because if you don't, you're gonna be in contact with Anna, Public Relations Officer, because of PG&E, and you don't want that, because the bill can be substantial if you hit something that belongs to them, and also cause kind of a big explosion. So, at this time, I would like to present this proclamation, recognizing California Safe Digging Month. The eight-one-one Call Before You Dig program is a vital public education and awareness program that will keep Californians safe, and education is the key to promoting safe digging practices. Excavators, homeowners, and professional contractors can save time and money while making California communities a safer place to live and work by dialing eight-one-one in advance of digging projects. Not nine-one-one, nine-one-one is after you don't dial the eight-one-one. Okay? Utility lines are often buried only a few inches underground, making them easy to strike and cause damage and harm even during the shallow excavation projects. More than a hundred and seventy thousand underground utility lines are struck each year in the United States, and approximately thirty-three percent of all digging damages in the United States result from not calling eight-one-one before digging. Undesired consequences such as service interruption, outages, damage to the public and private infrastructure and property, damage to the environment, personal injury and death, and risked, are risked by failing to call eight-one-one before digging or safely marking utility lines. As California's economy continues to recover from the recession and the state economic recovery stimulates new construction, new construction requires supporting infrastructure, and California's underground utility infrastructure is jeopardized by unintentional damage caused by those who fail to call before digging. The free notification service provided by Underground Service Alert of Northern California and Nevada has dramatically reduced the number of accidents causing property damage, personal injury, and the interruption of vital services. California public agencies should enforce California Government Code four-two-one-six regarding safe excavation practices permitting and civil penalties. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Vanos do hereby proclaim the month of April as California Safe Digging Month, and encourage all excavators, homeowners, and professional contractors to call eight-one-one in advance of all digging projects. Anna, we gratefully present this to you and to say that you've always been a person who has represented Los Vanos well, and an individual that can help us with any of these public relations issues that come up. And if you'd like to say a few words to just reinforce what the proclamation said, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. So you heard him, we should all be calling eight-one-one before we're digging, whether it be a big hole for a tree in our backyard, for our fence. We had a Merced city council member who was digging a hole for a fence, who dug into a gas line and received a bill not only from the city of Merced, but then also from PG&E. And most of all, we want you to do it because we want you to be safe, we want employees to be safe. It's really, natural gas is a safety hazard, and we want you to stay away from it if at all possible in your backyard. So thank you. I have, you actually had six dig-ins in Los Vanos last year, so we want to make that fewer this year is our goal. I have worksheets about eight-one-one that I'm going to give to you, and then I also have, for everyone on the dais, Call Before You Dig gloves, so when you're digging in the garden, you'll be reminded to call before you dig. Eight-one-one, it's a free call. Thank you very much.
Not that I'm ever gonna do any gardening, but... I'll ask you who the councilmember was in Merced later. A few months ago, when the individual is here, Tony Dutra, approached me about, about, saying, you know, Los Vanos has gone through a tough time, and we've had houses that have, that have been in disrepair, and now people are buying those houses and they are fixing them up. And he said, "What do you think about honoring some of these individuals?" And I said, you know, I said, "I think that is an excellent idea." So over the last few months, I've talked to the city manager about it, and I've, last meeting, I encouraged the city council members now to, to ride around town, and if they see a house that stands out, and there are many of them, and there are many homes, and this is the first recognition, it's not going to stop, we're going to continue recognizing people who have made an extraordinary effort to fix up their homes and to make them look nice, and to do it within bounds as much as they can, and Mr. Silva was here talking about the water, but everyone understands water usage, and I will tell you that Los Vanos, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, we were under the two thousand and thirteen limits, am I correct, for water usage? Yes, we, Los Vanos was actually one of the poster children who, who, who conserved water quite well, and now we're being asked to conserve twenty-five percent more under the thirteen thousand, two thousand and thirteen levels. So you do a good job and you get penalized more. So anyway, we have, we have with us tonight Brian Borges, Kim Borges, and Jim Torrey, and they are the residents and owners of the home on Fourth and J Street. And that home recently had gone through some hard times because the home next door unfortunately experienced a huge fire that destroyed the house and it burned one side of your house, didn't it? And, and that house is, in fact, Mr. Freo used to own that house at one time, and it was, it was quite a showplace, and, and it, the foundation is about eight feet thick, I know that from a kid because my father would tell me, and there's not a crack in that house, and the house was built many, many decades ago. And so now, they have spruced up the house really well, and the front yard, and the house looks, looks wonderful. So tonight, we just wanted to congratulate them as one of our first recipients, and could you please, three, come forward? Yes?
Might I come down?
Sure, you can come down. Yeah. The house was built in nineteen twenty-five. So you know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna have one of the former orders just give you a little talk here.
Nice to see you. It was our first house, and both our children were born where we lived there, and when we first, when we first bought it, the windows, it had thirty-five wood sash windows, and all, all plate glass, and they hadn't been repuddied in probably fifteen, twenty years, so I spent one summer putting the windows, another summer building a new fence in the back, and we redid and repainted the thing. The trapdoor to the, the trapdoor down into the basement was built by our Uncle Frank Lawrence and I, because he was worried that our, our baby would crawl down to the basement and get hurt. It has a beautiful little basement there, it's a classic old house. The, the external walls are a foot thick because the brick, sandstone brick you see on the outside is, inside that is another layer of red brick, and then an inch of plaster with metal lath. During the mighty earthquake in nineteen eighty-nine, the entire house just moved, and nothing cracked, nothing shook, nothing, the whole thing just moved as a single unit, and it's quite a beautiful place. It was owned originally by, I think, Wilson, the editor of the newspaper, and then Ed Love had it for many years, and then we took it over and we bought it in eighty-seven and sold it in ninety-two, if I remember right. Sold it to your brother, yeah, bless his, may he rest in peace, and he was a very wonderful man, pleasant man, we enjoyed meeting him very much. So congratulations on this award, and thank you for fixing the place up even more, and that big fire didn't do it any good either. It took down the trellis I built.
Well, thank you very much, and you know, it's wonderful to be here. I was born and raised in Los Vanos, my father was the elementary school principal for thirty-seven years, so one of his students is the mayor, and if Dad could be, he's up there looking down, he's probably looking at all these people who he knew all over the community, and I'm sure he feels that, or he should feel, he did a very fine job. And I'd like to introduce Brian Borges and Kim, his wife, who I have known for a decade, and they've done wonderful services for me, and I, I've always commended Brian for, and Kim for the excellent work they do on these properties, and they've done other properties before I met them, got to know them, they came over and I said, "You know, we're doing this for my brother." And it's beautiful.
Just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. So with that, I'd like to present you with these proclamations in appreciation of your efforts to improve the landscaping and beautification of your home. Brian and Kim, thank you.
Can you give me a group photo real quick?
Yes.
Real tighty.
Okay.
On three, big smiles, two, and... On three, big smiles, two, and...
So again, council members, if you see an extraordinary effort in home beautification, please bring it forth, and we can present an award. Okay? All right, let's go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and we voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have, Lucy?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, warrant numbers 152586 through 152826, in the amount of $1,154,632.93. Acceptance of the third quarter investment report for 2014-2015, and those items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? If not, do I have a motion? Mrs. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Hey, do I have a second? Mr. Freya, second? Motion by Silveira, second by Freya to approve the consent agenda as stated, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Public hearing, item eight, if you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of general plan amendment 2015-01, zone change number 2015-01, and tentative parcel map 2015-01, for Habitat for Humanity Westside County Incorporated for the rezone of three parcels. Currently zoned low-density residential R1 to medium-density residential R2, with the remainder of the 3,300-foot parcel to highway commercial H.C. for the project site located at 537, 543, and 547 M Street. Assessors' parcel number, number 026044012, 013, and 014. And 8A1, city council resolution number 5651, approving the general plan amendment 02015-01 for the property located at 537, 543, and 547 M Street. More specifically identified, assessors' parcel number is 026044012, 013, and 014. And ordinance number 1128, amending the official zoning map by rezoning the property located at 537, 543, and 547 M Street with low-density residential R1 to medium-density residential R2, and the remainder of the 3,300-square-foot parcel to highway commercial H.C. This is a second reading and adoption. The resolution is just a simple motion. Okay, at this time, I am going to call upon Assistant Planner Elms to give us a description.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on April 1st, 2015, the city council waived the first reading and introduced by title ordinance number 1128, and made a motion of intent to adopt resolution number 5651. The applicant for this particular project, and I'm just gonna give you a brief background on this project, I won't go into the deep detail that we did on the first reading. So the applicant is Habitat for Humanity Westside Merced County, Inc., and they're requesting a general plan amendment. This is to redesignate the land uses for the properties located at 537, 543, and 547 M Street from low-density residential to medium-density residential with the remainder portion to commercial. And then the second entitlement request is to rezone the properties from low-density residential, which is R1, to medium-density residential R2, and with the 3,300 remainder portion to highway commercial. And that remainder portion is actually designated as highway commercial because it's an existing storage shed that the property owners, the existing property own, and then they will retain that 3,300-square-foot warehouse, and the property on the front, which will be parceled off, based on the parcel map that the planning commission previously approved, would be parceled off and then bought by Habitat for Humanity. So the property is located at 537, and 543, and 547 M Street. It's approximately 270 feet west of Sixth Street, and the site is surrounded by single-family residential dwelling units to the north and to the west, and commercial uses immediately adjacent to the east and the south. And there is an alley on the southern boundaries of the property allowing access to that most southern parcel from the south. And the environmental that was done, so the SEQA analysis that was done, this project was deemed categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA per Article 19, Section 15315, and that it's a minor land division. And Section 15332, and that it's an infill development project.
Stacy? Do you have a question?
Can you put the map up on the screen? I have a question about an address.
Okay, I apologize, I don't have a map, but I do have an...
If you have it right there, just I can ask you the question. In the, on 8A1, it says 537, 543, and 547. On your map there in the middle property, it reads 549. So is it 543 or 549?
That's actually 543. It looks like it says 549, but it's 543 on my GIS. It should say 543.
All right, I'll take your word for it.
It's 543.
All right. Thank you.
You know, on this one too, it looks like it's, yeah, it should be 543. And that's correct, right, Habitat? Yes. It looks like a nine, okay. Well, I apologize, it should, we get that information from the county assessor's office, not to throw them under the bus, but it's 543. Sorry, Mark.
No, I didn't catch it, but the map does, it does say 549. That's a nine.
Okay.
So is it?
No, it is 543, and to confirm with Habitat, who also says it is 543. Their application says...
As long as the paperwork's correct, we're fine. Okay.
And their, their application does say 543.
Ned, you have a number you want to throw out, or what?
Yeah, I just want to explain, I haven't researched, my name's Ned Ryan, I'm with Habitat for Humanity. I haven't thoroughly researched it. I suggested the number 543 because it fits between 547 and 537. But I've seen the 549 number, and I don't know if that comes from the assessor's office or somewhere else, but it didn't make sense to me because it's not in sequence.
It may have originated from the tax rolls from the assessor's office, however, the city does authorize and does designate addresses. That's done between the fire department and the community and economic development department, and based on sequencing, it would make sense to have 543. It does not make sense to have 549 and then have 547 next door. Does not meet our sequencing. So yeah, you're absolutely correct. And plus, the APN numbers are right, which are the actual definite description of the property.
That's what I wanted to make sure we get.
Okay, so I'm gonna clarify for the public, it's 537, 543, and 547, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So just wrapping up on the presentation, so the environmental analysis, it is categorically exempt. A public hearing notice was published in the Los Banos enterprise, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is asking that the city council consider opening the public hearing, closing the public hearing, and then adopting ordinance number 1128 and resolution number 5651 for Habitat for Humanity Westside, redesignating for a general plan amendment, 537, 543, and 547 M Street, and then a rezone for those same properties. And that concludes my presentation, and Habitat is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions at this time? Okay, let's go to the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on these items? City council resolution number 5651 and ordinance number 1128. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and we have actually three actions. And the first one will be to approve city council resolution number 5651. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve city council resolution number 5651 as read by title.
Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya to approve city council resolution number 5651. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, now we'll go to ordinance number 1128, and we have two motions for, to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinances submitted. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading on ordinance number 1128 as read by title.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya to waive the second reading on ordinance number 1128. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1128 as read by title.
Mr. Freya?
Second that motion?
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya to adopt ordinance number 1128, and this is a roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Freya?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Stonegro? Rolata?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Item B, public hearing, to receive public comment and consider extending the development agreement for the villages at Stone Creek Four subdivision, ordinance number 1129, approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement relative to the development known as the villages at Stone Creek Four, making certain findings related thereto, and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement on behalf of the city. And we will go to Assistant Planner Elms. Oh, sorry. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Okay, so this proposal tonight is for the villages for DA extension, and the request is for an amendment to the villages for development agreement. It does expire this year, July 15, 2015, and the request is for a 10-year extension with no other amendments by the developer, the applicant. But the city is requesting an amendment regarding the annexation or formation to a landscape and lighting district. So this particular area would be in a district that we could possibly have the potential to become solvent again. So we're taking that opportunity through this development agreement extension. This is where the property is located, it's in the southwest quadrant of the city of Los Banos. It's west of Ortigalita Road, east of Badger Flat Road, north of Pioneer Road, and south of Cardoza Road. It's within the Stone Creek Area Plan, which encompasses this whole area from essentially Ortigalita Road all the way west to Los Banos Creek. A development agreement, I just wanted to back up and take a few moments just to explain what development agreements are. They're a legally binding contract between the city and a project developer. They specify the terms and conditions of a proposed development project. And development agreements secure vested rights, and they allow the city to secure certain benefits as well. So there's, it gives vested rights to the developer, but it also creates some benefits as well for the city. It is enabled by the California Government Code, so it's allowed through the government code. And typically, these are used for land use developments that are done in phases. And so they're gonna be done over time, a long period of time. And so with that, a development agreement can be used as a mechanism to extend the life of a map and keep it going. It also protects the developer from spending time, energy, money on a project that's only to have the conditions and standards changed. So it really vests them, locks them in to their conditions and their specifications that they're required at the time that the development agreement is set into place. Rules and regulations change all the time, and in order for a developer to have assurance that at the time they go to put in those street sidewalks, infrastructure, those standards will not change, and so it creates some assurances for them. Also, tentative and final maps, just a little explanation on what those are. So tentative maps are used to create five or more lots. A tentative map is not recordable. So a tentative map is really just the vision, what it is going to be tentatively before it becomes recordable and becomes legal lots. They do have short lifespans. According to the Subdivision Map Act, they are only good for 24 months, so two years, but the city of Los Banos and other jurisdictions also have this exception as well. If asked for an extension for another 12 months, it can be granted. So most of the time, a tentative map does have the life of 36 months, three years. A subdivider must satisfy the conditions or enter into an improvement agreement in order to be able to subdivide the lots. And after conditions are satisfied and the final map is in substantial conformance, our city engineer deems it complete, and then the final map can be recorded. So once a tentative map expires, it cannot be revived. So after those 36 months are over, and it's not in, this tentative map would not be in a development agreement, it does not have any vested rights, it expires. The subdivider would have to start all over again from scratch. That's a lot of time, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of time and money also on the city's expense to have to redo everything all over again. So it's to the benefit of both the city and the developer to extend the lives of these certain maps. And this development agreement, the original development agreement was for 10 years, it was made effective July 15, 2015, and the life of it is to July 15, 2015. Excuse me, back up, it was July 15, 2005 to July 15, 2015. It covers approximately 126 acres within the Stone Creek Area Plan, and the purpose really was to extend the life of the map until, it also extends the life of the map until one year after the development agreement expires. So say tonight, city council, you decide that you're not in favor of extending this development agreement, this tentative map would expire next year, July 15, 2016. So just to put that into perspective. The villages four is primarily residential R1 zoning, and it does have a planned development zoning overlay. What that means is that extra flexibility was given into this particular development, and in so, this, the developer had to lock in their architecture, streetscape, streetlights, those types of amenities, those were all locked in with the development in order to get that extra flexibility in zoning with that planned development overlay. It consists of 309 single-family residential lots, that's what was allocated for this particular tentative map. And it also designated a over 13-acre school site and four park lots. Two of those park lots are developed, one of them is Cardoza Park, or Olivera Park off of Cardoza, and there's a park off of Travertine that is also developed. Now, the school lot was deemed unacceptable for construction of a school because of the existence of a high-powered PG&E transmission pipeline which bisects the original school site. And that original school site was at the corner of Pioneer and Ortigalita. So the school site was moved, was negotiated with the school district, and was moved and is under construction now off of Prairie Springs. So we anticipate in the future that the developer would come in and redesignate that particular area plan area, and for future development, it'd probably be, in my thoughts, residential R1, is that's what fits in that particular area. The final map for this has been approved, so there are certain final, there's two final maps that have been recorded in this area, and it's for 93 of the 309 lots approved in this tentative map. There are 16 units constructed currently, right now, and there are 77 vacant lots, so basically paper lots ready to go. And there's 216 lots conditionally approved, just not recorded. So moving on, what this development agreement extension would do, it would extend the life of the map for an additional 10 years. of the map for an additional 10 years. The last development agreement extension that you saw was for villages 2A and 3. That extension was only for five years, but that was a smaller piece of land, and it just consisted of really one final map that needed to be recorded for villages 3. In this particular tentative map, only two phases have been recorded, and I believe it exists of six or so phases, which Ray DeSaw could probably correct for me, but it does have more phases going on, and it should be developed as the market dictates. It should not be developed because a development agreement is expiring or a map is expiring. So, it's in the best interest of the city, as staff feels, that the life should be extended. The development agreement also amends language to require the 216 tentative lots to form or annex to a landscape and lighting district for the proportionate share for the special benefits the individual lots receive. So, new language has been put in. Not only would they be required to annex or form into a landscape and lighting district, but they would also need to pay their proportionate share based on what the true costs of, are of that landscape and lighting district. So, public hearing, what, public hearing notices were published in the Los Banos Enterprise on April 3, 2015, and they were mailed to the 300-foot radius on April 3, 2015, so all those property owners within 300 feet of this particular project site. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. And then, the Planning Commission also recommended approval of this development agreement extension on March 25, 2015. So, with that, staff is recommending that the City Council approve a motion of intent to improve the First Amendment to the villages at Stone Creek Four development agreement, and then waive the first reading of ordinance 1129, introduce ordinance 1129, and then continue the item in public hearing until May 6, 2015. So, that concludes my staff report, and Ray DeSaw is here from Stone Creek Properties, Anderson Homes, to answer any questions as well.
Right. Council members, do you have any questions at this time? All right, let's go on to...
I have one.
Sorry.
Thank you. Stacy and also to Mark, I'm hoping that perhaps, as we talked about with the last projects that we heard, that it looks like our city is doing really well with parks. Anderson Homes built the Olivera Park on Ortigalita and...
Cardoza.
Yes, thank you. And it's a fairly sizable park, so I would certainly like to see any additional parks that are being scheduled for this project to be done away with and allow the developer to build houses in those areas. So, that would just be some of my suggestions for that. Okay, thank you.
Let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on ordinance number 1129? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing on ordinance number 1129 and bring it back to council level. And we have two actions, actually three, but there's one that's not listed, and I need a motion, of a motion of intent to approve the agreement first. It's not listed on your agenda, but we need to do that. Mr. Freya.
I would make the motion of intent to adopt resolution...
Approve.
To approve. Ordinance number 1129?
No.
Or the resolution? Where's my resolution listed?
There's no resolution.
We don't, okay, do we have a number for that resolution?
Apparently, there was some confusion. There is no resolution. We're just asking you to make a motion of intent to adopt the first extension agreement, because if you're not intending on adopting that, there's no reason to introduce the ordinance, which is the next action. So, it's kind of a two-step. There is no resolution, just a motion of intent to adopt that agreement.
Okay.
Of the development agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
I would make the motion of intent to adopt the resolution, to adopt a resolution as an intent?
The adopted development agreement.
To adopt.
Sorry. It's just a motion of intent to improve the extension agreement.
To approve the extension agreement.
That's all it is.
Okay. I'll try this again.
All right.
I'll make a motion of intent to approve the extension agreement.
Okay.
As read by staff.
That's it. That's it. Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, now that we've got that down, a motion of intent to approve the extension of the agreement, and stated by Freya, second by Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Now, Mr. Freya, let's go on to ordinance number 1129.
Now, this should get easier. I'll move to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1129 as read by title.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Second the motion.
Okay, motion by Freya, second by Lewis, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1129. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to the introduction. Mr. Freya.
I move to introduce ordinance number 1129 as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis, for the introduction of ordinance number 1129. Lucy, roll call vote, please.
Freya?
Yes.
Lewis? Silveira?
Yes.
Stone Grove? Valalta?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, let's go on to item nine, Merced County Economic Development Presentation, and we'll go to Assistant Planner Elms for a introduction.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'd like to introduce from the Community and Economic Development Department of Merced County, Mark Hendrickson, who is the director, and the deputy director, Robert Lung. They're going to be doing a presentation for you tonight on the partnership between the county and the six cities within Merced County to encourage economic development.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I am so pleased that Stacy identified my organization correctly, just for the record. I am not with the county assessor's office, but nonetheless, it is absolutely a privilege to be here. And before we get to the presentation, my hope tonight is for each of you to walk away with an understanding that your city staff is working incredibly well. And I'll tell you, having had an opportunity to work with a number of cities and jurisdictions over the course of my career, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with Mr. Kerrigan and with Ms. Elms some days on a daily basis. And so, we are very blessed as an organization to not only call them friends, but to work with them in every respect. I think we're gonna, okay, here we go. So, tonight's presentation, we're going to kind of go back a bit in time and give you a little bit of an update and overview. And when I speak of "we," that's not the county of Merced. That's literally you and us and each of the other cities as a part of, a part of our collaborative effort. Tonight, we're going to give you a little bit of background where we started, kind of where we're at, where we're going, kind of give you a few stats here along the way, again, all with the intention of showing and demonstrating that the cities and the county are doing economic development better with the intention of competing more effectively than we ever have. As you may recall, in this city, I believe was instrumental. And Mr. Silveira and I was in Washington DC as a part of a one-voice trip maybe a year or two ago, where we actually sat down with the Economic Development Administration. And as you can see from the slide, one of our first goals was actually to move forward with really development of an economic development strategy as a part of what is referred to as a comprehensive economic development strategy update. We'll talk about that more here in a second. That's one thing we did. Two, you know, we have moved forward with really a development of an attraction model. And three, again, going back to that team concept I spoke of earlier, we now have formalized a team approach that consists of each of the respective six cities as well as the county of Merced. You know, is this, and this is just a quick example of who we now bring around the table. And, you know, the picture is none other than just to show that, you know, we do work with our, with our city partners, and those are some of our friends from the city of Merced. And at some point, I've got to get a picture with Steve and Stacy to put up there as well. But each of our, each of our six cities, as well as our workforce development partners, our educational institutions and our utilities, each of these folks are a part of our collective team. And in order for us to, again, compete effectively, these are the folks we have, as a result of the partnership we've developed, are now around the table as we try to promote our region for success. What we did early on, and this is, again, I have to give a great deal of credit to each of our partners, but as a part of the process of really developing that strategy, we identified three key goals, one of which is to grow our economy, two, to make ourselves more competitive, and three, what can we do to develop our talent better here in this county? We'll flush those out here in a little bit. You know, last year, and again, as you walk away tonight, and I'm going here fairly quick, but I wanted to highlight that we, as a team, were able to achieve a few different things. You know, first and foremost, these are in no, no particular order. Again, each of the cities in the county worked together, and each of us adopted an MOU and established protocols. And protocols in terms of how do we respond to leads, how do we distribute leads, how do we, again, try to position ourselves better than we have in the past? We were successful, and again, this is where I give you, as a policymaking body, as well as the others throughout the county, a great deal of credit. We did finalize the comprehensive economic development strategy update, and it was approved by the Economic Development Administration this past December. And that's just, in all honesty, that's just code word for, that gives us the ability to compete for economic development grants coming out of the federal government for infrastructure that each of our respective jurisdictions believe are important within their respective jurisdictions. We have a new marketing pitch packet that, as we get leads and as each of the cities, you know, give us sites from which to forward, that we're utilizing. We did accomplish, you know, obviously, our, you know, action plan, which included things like, you know, ensuring that we, as a region, are being adequately represented at broker missions, trade shows, and interacting with site selectors. And we'll talk more about that here in a subsequent slide in terms of really what does that mean? But just to put it in perspective, you know, we as a, we as a collective team, got Merced County, each of our six cities, out to 11 fairly significant markets that range everywhere from New York to Dallas. As a matter of fact, in about two weeks, I'm going to go back to Dallas on behalf of some of the work that we're doing. And that resulted in a number of face-to-face contacts. But, you know, one thing I want to point out is, you know, the number 49. Responding to leads, we'll talk more about that again here in a second, you know, in the slides, we responded to 49 leads as a collective group over the course of that year. And the one thing I would tell you, you know, has that resulted yet in any walk-off home run? I'm a baseball fan. We had a walk-off home run? Not yet. But I tell you one thing, you can't win if you don't compete. And the fact is, is we are responding at a faster clip, at a more efficient clip than ever before, and that's, again, a result of the hard work in many cases, as a result of your good staff. We do have some things that I think we can collectively point to as being, you know, trending in the right direction. Clearly, unemployment's still too high, but it is down as it relates to, you know, to where we have been in the past, and we are seeing some jobs added, you know, countywide. You know, going back a couple steps, and talking about growing our economy, there's lots of different components to that, but, you know, what I really do want to focus on is the fact that, you know, we are working incredibly hard not only expand, you know, opportunities, bringing new people to the region, but we also understand that it is important for us to be mindful of the business that we do have and helping existing business grow. We have launched, obviously, a marketing strategy, and we're going to do better, you know, here with that as well, and, you know, with websites and whatnot that, again, are designed to put each of our six cities in the county on a broader global map. Developing our talent, I will tell you, this is one of our critical, critical points that we need to continue to make significant strides with. You know, currently, the number one site selector factor when they are evaluating communities is how ready is the workforce for the jobs of tomorrow? So, keep that in mind, and for that reason, it's important for us to have solid relationships with the Workforce Investment Board, with Merced College, et cetera, et cetera, those who are helping provide that training. So, again, our residents, whether they are in the city of Los Banos, or whether they are in the city of Livingston or anywhere in between, are ready to take on those jobs. You know, this is a, this is a set of numbers, and they're a little bit dated, and I understand our partners with the Workforce Development Department are going to be coming out with their 13, 14 numbers here fairly soon, and I won't go through all of these, but, you know, these are some of their stats at their most, their most, the most recent interview report. But what this really does show is that, and I know it's a little small, but, you know, the first number, they're just shy of about 50,000 total visits to various work net facilities, you know, here in the county of Merced. And really, what they do is they are providing a host of, I think our next slide will show it, just a meaningful list of services, so that, again, our residents are in a position to compete, but also, and there's, you know, a great deal of work that they do to help those who are displaced. You know, as we kind of, you know, transition here, this is something that I am proud of. You know, the county of Merced, for many years, has essentially a business counseling program where we contracted with somebody to provide a, you know, essentially a range of services to help primarily small business get off the ground. This past, this past year, you know, our board, we went in a slightly different direction to do the same type of things, but a little bit more with a greater focus on what can we do to help, you know, small business find even greater success. And we established a relationship with the Small Business Development Center. And these are just some current stats that have taken place since July, which is essentially when the contract started. And these are, these are referrals that are coming from every corner of the county, and these are at zero cost to... With business plan development. And just here a few weeks ago, you know, we do have a, as a county, we have a revolving loan fund. We just extended a loan to a business to help retain 15 jobs within the community. And, you know, again, 15 jobs may not sound like a whole lot, but 15 jobs in a community like ours in Merced County is very meaningful. You know, this is one that really, really, I think is important, which is, again, going back to, you know, what can we do to make ourselves as competitive as we can? I can tell you, you know, one of the, one of the broker missions that I went to this past year was in New York. And I was meeting actually with a, with a site selector just across, over in New Jersey. And he was very clear, you know, we're not coming to California, a variety of reasons, you know, poor regulatory climate, the things that we are all very well aware of. But he says, you know what? We'll think about the valley, because you need to be, but you need to be branding yourself as the other California. We want to be the best place in arguably a very difficult state from which to do business, and so, we want to be more competitive, and we're going to get there by doing a few different things. One, by having a better understanding of what our strengths and weaknesses are, but most certainly, what constraints we have from a real estate perspective, what can we do to actually help make sites shovel-ready or location-ready, what can we do to fast-track projects? And as a result of that, some of those efforts, we've been more engaged with a host of different organizations, most notably, you know, we as a team are represented now on the California Central Valley Economic Development Corporation, which is a lead source. We are interacting with site selectors, consultants, brokers differently and better than we have before. Marketing branding, again, going back to my previous statement, you know, the reality is, is we here in this community, whether in Los Banos or whether in Atwater or anywhere in between, we have much to be proud of. For whatever reason, going back many, many years, we have been plagued with a number of socioeconomic challenges, high unemployment, low wages, et cetera, et cetera. But I would argue those things need not define who we are, and that's, I believe that in my heart. We need to show the world that, you know, Merced County and we collectively are a place that, that the business can and should take place. So, we're working as a group to actually brand ourselves better. We've done that through websites, we've developed brochures that highlight each of our respective communities, we've developed, you know, tools that the broker community, you know, utilize, again, I mentioned the pitch pack, and we'll show you that in a little here in a little bit, better, a better job with regard to social media. And then, one thing kind of at the tail end, you know, we have, Robert has done just a tremendous job developing a great deal of data that is meaningful to those people who are evaluating communities for consideration. You know, again, this year, just to put in perspective, this is January 1 through, really, the end of February, you know, we've done several broker missions all... really, the end of February, we've done several broker missions already, and just at this point in the year, again, last year we had 49, this year we're all ready to 22. So, you know, we're seeing, you know, fairly decent leads, and, you know, hopefully, that's a sign of the economy continuing to rebound, but we're very hopeful that those trends continue. Do want to highlight real quick, in order for us to do our job, in terms of responding to leads, and we have a slide here in a second that's really going to show you that process, really want to note, it's really incumbent upon getting good information back from each of our cities. And I would tell you firsthand, that's a result of Stacy Elms getting back to us typically within a couple minutes. Helps make our jobs better, she's efficient, and, again, as a result of that, we are doing our part collectively. You know, Robert had a chance to, in addition to doing broker missions, you know, we do represent, obviously, the region as a part of the California Central Valley Economic Development Corporation efforts, go to Sacramento and actually advocate for those things that would hopefully make doing business in California easier. This past year, just to highlight a few, these are just a few of the things that were discussed, everything from trying to help those areas who have been plagued with chronic high unemployment, to, again, you know, what can we do to...
To make business...
So, you know, again, you've heard me mention kind of leads. You know, leads come from a variety of different sources, whether it's the governor's office, or whether it's a, you know, CCVDC, or directly from a site selector or a broker. We've actually become pretty efficient, where we're actually turning those things around, literally, in probably just a few days. And typically, you know, they include just a great deal of information that's meaningful to those making site selection, you know, decisions, demographic information, labor information, you know, who's achieved what degree at what school. Those are forwarded to cities, and typically, you know, our cities help us identify respective sites within their community. Again, something as simple as, we'll ship a quick email to Stacy, probably in two minutes, we'll get a response back as to, yes, we have something, or in many cases, maybe we don't. And that's okay, too. You know, it's a, you know, we're trying to move at the speed of business. The, over the last year or so, again, this is where I have to give Robert a great deal of credit, we now have an opportunity to leverage technology a bit. You know, every once in a while, a lead is very, very generic. It could be, you know, "I want 100,000 square feet located next to a rail line," and that's all we know, you know, with certain zoning. Now we have the ability to actually type in those parameters, and it will spit out, you know, sites, you know, for consideration from throughout the county, based on the parameters that were set. And then typically, you know, we'll try to do some verifying as to whether or not those properties are even available, and that's where, again, our partnership with the city is very, very handy. Pitch packet is something that we use with every, with every response to every lead that we get. It's a, I think, a document that is really beginning to set our county apart, you know, from everyone else. And what you, this really doesn't do it justice, but inside that star, you know, hopefully you can see, you know, Los Banos, every city and every unincorporated community is reflected within that star, again, trying to show that we are collectively moving forward as one unit. With one quick tagline, which is, you know, we're trying to promote that, hey, you need to be doing business here. Moving forward, we've got a great deal of work ahead of us. You know, again, just here, in a couple weeks, I'll be heading to Dallas. But this is just to go, it just goes to show that, you know, our efforts are really intended on trying to market, you know, our region effectively with those decision-makers who are, who have clients looking to locate somewhere in the Western United States. This is, you know, just a quick snapshot, we do have a fairly good idea in terms of what type of industrial space do we have available. You know, this is, and this is where I've got to give this council and your staff a great deal of credit. This is, you know, this, you take a look at this slide, and I know the numbers are real small, and it's not really intended to go through the numbers, but the reality is, is, you know, in order for us to compete, so that we can bring the Amazon-type of facilities that our neighbors just down the road have been very successful with, we need to have shovel-ready, entitled sites that have the ability to attract economic development to this region. And this is where I have to give this council and your city manager and staff a great deal of credit, which is why my organization remains incredibly excited about the prospect of trying to do something along that line, where, again, we could put Merced County on the map, create an environment in which the private sector can be successful, and hopefully, create meaningful work, employments, employment and opportunities for residents, most notably those from the city of Los Banos. So what do we need? Again, we need industrial parks, we need development, we need more, because, in all honesty, there just isn't much. That's the reality. In order for us to compete with larger areas who typically have, you know, more available space, we've got to do something different. That's why I think the creative partnership between the city, the county, and the private sector, kind of this public-private partnership that we are all very familiar with, is vitally important for the future of the county of Merced, and I believe for the city of Los So I will shut up, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, but again, just want to close with thanking you for this quick opportunity, thanking you for the work that you do, thanking your staff for being just friends and partners in the process. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mark, what were the 2,900 jobs added? You'd mentioned the figure, and employment's down 2.2%?
Those are county-wide statistics that we were able to gain from the economic, from EDD, and so we'll take a look at that type of information, try to determine, you know, where you see some growth. You know, we have seen some growth, obviously, in the manufacturing sector. Just as an example, and this is not, obviously, an all-inclusive number, but, you know, it's a small example of where I think we're seeing some success. You know, we were able to successfully bring an overhead crane manufacturer a couple years ago, and I think they were promising like 25 jobs after year one. Well, the reality is, after year one, it was, you know, I think the number was just shy of about 60. Again, walk-off home run? No, probably not. Pretty strong singles. We are seeing some gains in manufacturing, but, you know, of course, you know, we, as an ag-based economy, most certainly, I would suspect that we're going to see probably some gains prospectively in food processing, obviously, here on the West Side, as some of the facilities continue to grow and reach new markets. I would suspect that we're going to see, you know, more activity along that line as well. Clearly, while we may be trending in the right direction, you know, I think the last figures were still well into the double digits. We've got work to do, which is why projects like the one I just talked about are so important.
Can EDD get us a breakdown as to, you know, where these jobs were, they're located, what field they were in?
Yes, sir. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I'd be more than happy to try to get that, and we get that to Steve probably tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you. Mark, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
It's very enlightening. And I think, you know, a lot of us, and most people, if you listen to the news, have heard that by 2020, in the United States, that the big push is going to be in the dot-com and the high-tech industry. I also heard recently that, education-wise, China's one of the big areas where kids who may not go to a four-year institution are going to technology schools to gain that particular expertise, so that they can move right into the jobs that our kids in this country need. New York is the financial hub of the United States, and California is the technology hub. I have a son who happens to work for an organization who's done very well in recruiting kids, training them, and working with some of these industries in the Bay Area, and placing them in jobs successfully. So it really behooves us to begin to move in that direction, and that's no disrespect to the other industries that we have in the Valley here. But even with that, the technology that the farming industry needs can also be enhanced through this. So it's, you know, putting buildings on the ground, being ready for companies to move in is truly important. I saw that for years in the Bay Area, where developers were just building infrastructure, and there was no one in it, and all of a sudden, boom, the buildings are filled up. So we're a good breeding ground for that. It's a little bit cheaper to operate over here than in the Bay Area, so I'm really enthusiastic and glad to hear that you're working towards that, and that you did mention that as a high priority for the Valley. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, approach him. Could I agree with you more? You know, again, I think that, you know, going back to some of my earlier comments, we've got tremendous opportunities here in this region. And while, as we all are very well aware, with any community, within any region, there are often naysayers who only want to highlight those things that are negative, and I think, and with all due respect to those folks, we need champions, not critics. We need those folks that are willing to step up and realize that we are a region that is very worthy of those types of opportunities. And I do believe that we are, we are due our fair share. Yes, ma'am.
And as another side of encouragement, this might be a good time for our junior college here in Los Banos, as well as Merced, to start looking at those areas and training their students.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Kerrigan. Mark, Robert, I want to thank you for coming out on a school night. I know you have children, Robert has a newborn at home, people don't know that, so I know we're taking time away, but thank you for coming out. I have had the chance to work with these guys for the last two years, and they do know what they're talking about. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and, as you know, my background is in economic development, and I appreciate you not laughing at some of my ideas, but I know what you need more than anything is industrial development, because you have the plan, you have the infrastructure, you're out there talking to all the right people, you just need more product to market or sell. So we're hoping to deliver that, but in the meantime, keep doing exactly what you're doing. I get all the good reports from Stacy, we talk regularly, but these are two of our biggest champions in Merced County, and we are lucky to have them on the other side of the county fighting for us every day. So thank you very much, it does mean a lot to us.
All right, sir. Mrs. Silveira.
Yeah, just a couple comments. Thanks for coming out. And so those pitch packets, so every time you get one of those leads, you send that pitch packet out, is that how that works?
Correct. To the needs of, to the requirements of the lead. So, you know, again, as a lead comes in, sometimes they are fairly general, where you have very little information, sometimes they're a little bit more specific, but we will tailor that package depending upon the needs of the prospective business, most of the time of which we have no idea who it is. So, yes, quick answer, Mrs. Silveira, you're absolutely correct.
And so those are, is that a hard packet that you mail to them, or is that something that you send them electronically?
Both.
Both. I just, why I think it's such a great idea is, you know, I don't know whose hands that goes, is that a site selector, someone, you know, a consulting firm that they hired to have them go find it, but leaving them with something, maybe it doesn't work out on this one, but maybe they see something in there that, man, I already, I got one already for the next time, that, you know, I know will work when, so I think that's just a really great idea.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the only thing I would say, and I did not highlight this in my presentation, and I apologize for that, you know, site selectors' role, their whole job in the world is to exclude a community, you know, from consideration, not include a community for consideration. The objective of the pitch packet is to step, help us kind of step outside the box, show that we're capable of meeting their needs, and hopefully, when it's all said and done, get ourselves into a position where, you know, where we're shortlisted. And, you know, again, you know, the county, my organization, has taken an approach that if a job is created in the city of Los Banos, or a job is created in a pick-and-unincorporated community, it's a win for the people of the county of Merced.
Yeah. Thank you. And then my last is just a comment, is I really do like hearing the talk of, I'm so, I get a little bit frustrated, I don't want us to ever, the comparison from the east side, the west side, you know, there's Castle on the east side, and we're talking about an industrial park over here on the west side. To me, the talk needs to be in conjunction with each other. How, instead of this, and I'm not saying it to you, I'm saying sometimes you hear people out there, and they're talking east side, west side. What I say is, we need to find ways to, where those, you know, they help each other, they make each other, they work together, they look good together, thank is the word, they complement each other. So I'm glad to hear you guys over there talking about that, because I think that's, you know, we need to go down this road together. We all, because you're right, you know, this industrial park, you know, at Build Out, we're talking 10,000-plus jobs, that's not going to just benefit Los Banos, that's going to benefit the whole county, and quite honestly, it may benefit some of, you know, Fresno County is not that far up the road from us, there could, there'll be people that live on the outskirts of Fresno County that could be working there. So it benefits our whole area. So at least if our own house, we could all be pulling in the same direction, it just benefits everybody, and it benefits this Valley. So I just want to compliment you guys on the work that you're doing, and keep up the good work, and, you know, at least we're in the game.
Yes, sir.
We didn't hit a home run, maybe game walk-off home run, like you said, but you've got to be in it to win it, right?
Exactly.
So that's where we're at right now, so...
Yes, sir.
And I completely agree with you on our staff and the level, I mean, I know the city manager sends us a weekly report, kind of going over some highlights for the week every week, and I don't think I've missed one yet, that there's not that meeting with community and economic development staff. So they're doing a great job there, and, you know, we're going to find that diamond in the rough, I'm sure of it.
We will get that walk-off home run.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Freire.
Thank you for coming out.
Yes, sir.
All the hard work, we very much appreciate it. If that business park comes to fruition...
Yes, sir.
Well, that'll be more than a walk-off home run.
I would think.
That'd be a grand slam.
Yeah, I would think.
Thanks for coming out.
Yes, sir, my privilege.
You know, I just want to echo, in part, what everyone else has said, we want to complement each other, and this is Merced County. We want to make sure that the jobs, if possible, come to Merced County. And this business park is important, because it's going to complement, in one way or another, another project that's located in another part of the county. We all need to work together, and in the process, the county will benefit from the sales tax that's produced, and so will the city of Los Banos. And that way, the county's sales tax can be shared with the rest of the county. It's important to note that, again, not an east-side, west-side project, it's how can two projects work together? And this project is wonderful, because Los Banos is the only location in the county right off of I-5. So thank you for all your help, and keep pushing this forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's go on to item 10, Police Department update and presentation of 2014 crime stats. Police Chief Rezey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Kind of on a side note, I like that branding idea of calling us the other California, and that's unique and right up our alley, I think. Go ahead, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight this look back at 2014. We are just one of a number of departments within the city that are proud to provide a service to the residents of our community, and we think we do a fairly decent job of that. My goal with the presentation tonight is threefold. I want to look back at the year in review, 2014, provide you some statistics, our Part 1 statistics, our Uniform Crime Report statistics. And then third, I'd like to talk a little bit about the benefits of being involved as a citizen of our community. First, we'll talk a little bit about the budget, just so that we can inform the general public of what we monetarily have in order to do our job. $6.7 million in the general fund, augmented by about $1.9 million in other special revenues that include Measure P, A, and K, that the residents of this community so graciously afforded us with, Homeland Security, SLEF, CFD's Community Facilities Districts, JAG Grant, and some other funds, for a total operating budget, the police department at $8.6 million. Staffing, the staffing, the next two slides are really important to me. Authorized by the budget, through the approval process that you all go through every year, the police department has 61 authorized staff members. Thirty-nine of those are sworn police officers. Currently, of those 39 authorized, we have 36. And we are in the process of hiring, hopefully, three trainees who will attend a police academy in June in Morgan Hill, to bring us back up to 39. And just a breakdown, because everyone always says, well, you've got 40 cops or 30 cops, where do they all go all the time? Well, 23 of them are on patrol, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have four detectives, three administrators, myself, and two commanders, three school resource officers under contract with both the school district and... Three school resource officers under contract with both the school district and Merced County Office of Education. Sergeant Seha is assigned to code enforcement. Officer Noah Jones is our PAL officer, and we have one officer assigned to the Merced multi-narcotic, I'm sorry, multi-agency narcotics task force. On the non-sworn side, we have 10 dispatchers, five CSOs who run our jail, two code enforcement officers, one police services manager. That's our non-sworn manager. Of a majority of the staff that are on that right column, custodian, property evidence, a crime analyst, and then a admin clerk for code enforcement, which brings us to two, excuse me, 22 total non-sworn, or 58 total employees. To provide some perspective and a look back at some of the staffing issues that we deal with almost on a daily basis, with the Human Resources Department hand-in-hand with us, is recruitment and retention of police officers. What we did for the purposes of this presentation was I went back and literally looked at the, first step was, I looked at the picture of the police department back in 1996. And I went through, and I tried to determine who was still here, who wasn't, who retired, and who left for another agency. Through that process of looking back at rosters, other police department annual photos, we came up with a short list of 43 police officers that have been recruited by the police department, that were hired for a length of time, and left for one reason or another. Thirty-five of those 43 left for another agency. Eight of those officers we recruited, but we did not retain. That right column is an example of, or breakdown of who we lost those officers to. We lost four each to the Las Gadas Police Department, the Merced Police Department, the Merced Sheriff's Department. We've lost three to Redwood City PD, two to Turlock, Fresno, Department of Justice, City of Modesto, City of Tracy, and one to each of the UC system and the CSU system. And then, we lost one officer to each of those other agencies, Salinas, Hollister, Mountain View, Santa Maria, Redding, Series. We lost an officer to the country of Australia and the state of Illinois. The officer from Australia came back to visit not too long ago, and it sounds like a different world over in Australia compared to what we do. So, nonetheless, we spend a lot of time recruiting and going through the process of hiring police officers. And again, this is just a snapshot of the sworn staff. We have other staffing needs that we go through a lot, because a lot of times our CSOs often become our police officers. Part-time receptionists become dispatchers or CSOs. So, there's a lot of fluidity in the department, because people are always trying to better themselves. The unintended consequence of that is the considerable amount of time and resource that we put towards hiring and maintaining those employees. Just a real quick breakdown of some numbers. The patrol operations, again, 23 officers provide that 24-hour-a-day service. In 2014, they generated over 26,000 reports of one form or another. That's an increase over 2013 of about 1,588. I'm happy to report that there were no fatalities, traffic-related fatalities, in 2014, even though our citations went down about 400. And one of my usual indicators of accidents to citations is where I try to see, if I have more accidents, I need to write more tickets, because we're trying to change people's behavior. In this case, and actually statistically, over the past several years, the less citations we've written has kind of coincided with less traffic accidents. The more citations that we've written equated to more traffic accidents in our, looking back at the stats, which was unusual for me, because I would have thought the exact opposite would happen. But I'm glad to report that this year, we're down in traffic accidents. Our adult arrests are up to 1,249, and we had 103 DUI arrests. Both those categories are up. Our special services unit is the overall name of our detectives, gang unit, traffic unit. And we have four officers assigned to that currently, three detectives and one detective sergeant. They worked over 500 cases in 2014 and served over 50, served 52 search or arrest warrants. The reality of our circumstance, however, is the next part, where I say unfortunately, the staffing does not allow us to have a full-time two-person street crimes unit, or a full-time two-person traffic unit. As Mark mentioned in his presentation from the county, we were doing really good for a time. In 2008, we had both of those teams together. We still have the two motorcycles, and we get them out as often as we can on overtime. But they're dedicated to that patrol effort currently, because we just don't have the staffing to do that full-time. Tell you, the number-one complaint, I'll say number-one A is traffic, and number-one B is code enforcement complaints for the police department currently. And we do our darndest to keep traffic at the top of our list. So, the moment we can, we're going to put people back into that gang enforcement unit. We're going to put people back into that traffic enforcement unit as dedicated bodies, where all they do is go out and contact gang members and people's driving behavior safe. If I'm going too fast, please stop me and ask a question at any point in time. I don't mind. Code enforcement, we've had the code enforcement department division now since, I believe, March of last year. They responded to over 800 calls. They tagged 172 vehicles on private property. That's quite a few for the two people that we've got, two code enforcement officers. One of them is assigned to animal control, and his day is full doing animal control, which we'll talk about in a moment. They issued, the three of them, Jason, Tammy, and Jesse, issued 174 administrative citations for violations of our municipal code. And we've talked about this before, but code enforcement is broken into those two different divisions, community preservation and then animal control. Animal control is always busy. They responded to 2,938 calls, which is up from last year. Jason Martin, our animal control officer, our code enforcement animal control officer alone, responded to over 1,000 calls this year, where he generated a report of some type. That's a lot of calls for one man to do, when you consider all of the other duties that he has at the shelter, with the volunteers. I love that guy. He does a great job for us. We impounded 2,398 animals, which is actually down from last year, but our save rate, and this is thanks to our volunteers, I really appreciate the proclamation you gave today to our animal control volunteers and our vital volunteers, without a doubt, that save rate of 80%, 1,919 animals this year, is attributed directly to the efforts of our animal control volunteers. They do an outstanding job, and we would not be able to achieve that number without them, hands down, without a doubt. So, I really appreciate their efforts. Dispatch center, boy, we saw an unusual increase in the number of telephone calls answered by dispatch this year, this year, 2014. Almost 48,000 times did we pick up that phone and say, "Los Banos Police Department." That's up, I've got to do the math, it's up about 12,000, if I'm doing the math right, from 35,000 calls last year. That is a tremendous increase. Of those 47,000 calls, 16,000 of them were 911 calls. That is an increase from last year, I'm sorry, 2013, of 9,566. And I'm going to go back through and recap all these in one of the slides you'll see here soon. We attribute many of those calls, the 911 calls, to the fact that we have, over the last two years, migrated from cellular line, 911 calls going to the higher patrol office. We get them all now. It's a really neat system. We get GPS coordinates, and we can tell where people are at if they can't give us their location. It pops up on a map. We can direct our units to that location rather easily now. But that increase in calls, from 9,566 in 2013 to over 16,000 in one year, is a tremendous effort by our dispatchers. Hands down, the hardest grouping, hardest working group of dispatchers in the valley. The jail, the jail has gone down as far as the number of people that we've booked over the years, because when the tough times hit, I made the decision of not booking for agencies that were not willing to pay us. I think you're going to see that that's going to increase, because slowly, more agencies are coming back. They're willing to pay the fee to book at our jail, because the sheriff's department, for example, would have to take a person that they've arrested in San Onofre all the way back to Merced in order to book them, because they weren't able to book at our facility for a time. That takes that deputy out of the San Onofre area for hours, because you don't just get into the Merced jail and book within 10 or 15 minutes. You're there for sometimes hours, in line, waiting to book with other agencies. But for 2014, we booked 1,496 adults. That's up from 2013. Our booking numbers alone were, for adults, was 1,249. That's also an increase. And again, I will, I'll show you a little, much more concise breakdown of those statistics here in the next couple of slides. PAL is another one of our shining stars at the department, run by Officer Noah Jones. It is probably the best PAL organization in Merced County. I would dare say the region, because for what we have as far as staffing that we put towards this program, he knocks it out of the park all the time. The numbers have gone up this year as compared to last year. You can see the activities that PAL provides, grill softball, junior Giants baseball, flag football, Cops for Kids, and sober graduation. It's the police department's one positive activity that we can provide for this community on a regular, consistent basis. We do as much outreach as we can in the form of intervention and prevention techniques to get people out of crime, prevent them from getting into crime. But this has been a consistent standard for us for a number of years. It puts Noah, it puts other officers in the field, coaching some of these teams. I've been a coach for PAL in the past. I have a blast, as have other people. So, PAL has been a great asset to the department. Okay, so, this is that recap of those numbers. I just wanted to go over because of the swiftness that I have provided you with the numbers initially. There were only four categories where we saw a decrease in numbers. And in one of the categories, the total, the traffic fatalities, we're glad to see that number go down, and we're always happy when it does. Citations, like I mentioned, it did go down, but as did our traffic accidents. And the number of animals impounded slowly is starting to get better. We talk about spay-neuter programs. The city offers one, a discount spay-and-neuter program. The animal control volunteers offer a spay-and-neuter program. We don't officially have a TNR program, Trap Neuter Release Program in the city, but our volunteers are very active in capturing feral cats. They get them spayed or neutered, and then they take them out to local dairies. And we have agreements with local dairies where we let them loose, and the cats are mice catchers. So, there isn't an official program, because a lot of times, it's a funding issue, that we can't afford to spay and neuter the animals as often as we're getting them. But we're doing absolutely everything we can, when we can, with the programs that we can. Again, I think the couple that I would like to highlight in this recap of the numbers is that 911 call answered by our dispatchers. That went up in one year, 6,549 calls. That's an incredible number in just one year of an increase, as is the total number of telephone calls that they answered, going up by almost 13,000. The statistics, so our Part 1 crimes are the major crimes that we report to the state and the federal government every year. We released the numbers locally here the other day, but to recap, we saw an 11.87% decrease in crime as compared to 2013. If you consider the fact, and I'm superstitious, so I try not to say it too much, but if you consider the fact that between 2012 and 2013, we saw a decrease of almost 14%, that puts us in excess of a 25% decrease in crime over the last two years. Man, that is a good number. That is a hard-working number, a hard-fought number, that requires the assistance of the community, our residents, that we're going to talk about here in a moment. But we've been able to achieve, without anything other than our efforts in the field and with the community, a 25, almost 26% decrease in crime in the last two years. So, I'm celebrating that for this very small moment, because, like I said, I'm superstitious. I don't want to say it anymore. And I also will say that Proposition 47 is, has changed the game for California. It's yet to be seen what the total difference or change will be. It's too early to tell. But what Prop 47 basically did was take a number of felony crimes and turn them into misdemeanors. So, a good example would be possession of a controlled substance, methamphetamine, Rohypnol. There's a lot of those drugs now that went heroin from a felony for possession to a misdemeanor. So, instead of a trip to jail, and you see a judge in court, try and get some help for you, we write you a ticket. And that's going to be a game changer. Property crimes now, and I have another presentation that I'm going to do on Prop 47, but property crimes now, generally, it used to be $400 threshold to be a felony. It's now $950. We've seen across the state, people taking items from local businesses, where they stay under that number, so that they know if they get caught, they're only being charged with a misdemeanor. And that is very frustrating, because it ties one of our hands behind our back, to do the job.
Chief, I think California sees, the state legislature sees the same thing, and now they're trying to, some of the legislators are trying to react by passing bills to counter Act 47.
Yes.
That the citizens voted in.
Yes.
And so, this merry-go-round goes on and on and on. Someone votes something in, and then the legislators, you know, try to make a few points by counteracting what was enacted. And so, who loses? The citizens of every community in the state of California and their police departments.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Freya, did you have a comment?
On meth and heroin, is there a threshold at which it becomes a felony, or is it for possession?
For different crimes.
Different items.
Perhaps manufacturing of those drugs.
But just possession?
Yeah, mere possession is.
No matter how much the possession is?
No, no, I think there's a, there is a, there is a threshold, I believe, where it becomes a felony. Transportation.
All right.
And you could be walking down the street with six pounds of meth. You're going to get charged with that. But I'm talking mere possession, the user end of it, those people that we're trying to affect change on, because they're generally caught in a cycle when they're using those drugs. They need to sustain their habit. In order to do that, they generally get involved with other crimes.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly. I steal things. So, we will enjoy that 25.79% number. We are going to work as hard as we can to keep that number down. The good part, the last time I looked at the Merced County registrar voter's office, and it's been a few months now, Proposition 47 was actually, the majority of people in Merced County actually voted against Prop 47, interestingly enough. So, what can a normal citizen do to help us lower crime? Well, there's a few things. First one is, you can become a police volunteer, like you stated earlier. There is nothing better than having people interact with law enforcement on a daily basis. Nothing changes the perception of perhaps the us-versus-them mentality than seeing the things that we do every day, because it really humanizes the men and women that I work with every day, who are trying to do a very tough job, make decisions in an instant, only to be second-guessed by the media most times, inappropriately. So, there's nothing better than to get them inside our department, working with us, to see that 99.9% of the people that I work with, up and down the state, are great people, trying to do the best for their community. So, becoming a volunteer is important. Let's talk about the volunteers real quick. And the mayor mentioned it in his proclamation. There's about 25 vital volunteers, and I want to go back on one of the numbers that code enforcement did. I believe it was 172 vehicles that they tagged on private property to help beautify our neighborhoods. The volunteers tagged 85 vehicles themselves on the public right-of-way. That is 257 vehicles that they moved from either a front yard, a driveway, grass, or your next-door neighbor's sidewalk or portion of the roadway in front of the driveway, or, I'm sorry, in front of the sidewalk. I know that doesn't mean a lot to some people, but to me, when you're in charge of code enforcement, the fact that we're keeping those people moving those cars, 257 is quite a bit. So, I really appreciate their efforts. The Volunteers for Animals, like I discussed, over 5,500 hours this year in volunteer service... to this community. They do a great job, and like I mentioned, we would not have the save rate that we have. We wouldn't be getting out animals to adoption owner, not owner releases, but getting owners to reclaim their dogs or getting them adopted or fostered out without their efforts. And they go up and down the state. In fact, there was an article that talked about, I don't know where it was, but there was an article about a, a group of people that owned planes that were flying animals up and down the state of California. Our volunteers have participated in events like that, have participated in fostering out and adopting out animals up and down the state of California with other states because they will go to the end of the earth to make sure these dogs are saved. Okay, so I want to go back to what some of the people in this community can do to help us solve crime, help us to reduce crime. I've got three examples that I want to talk about really quick. The first one is an armed robbery in 1,000 block of Pacheco Boulevard on January 31st. Two men armed with firearms enter a business, rob the business at gunpoint. As they leave, a citizen flags down one of the arriving officers to tell them the vehicle description of the vehicle that the suspect drove away in. The officers are able to identify the car, find it, and apprehend the suspects after a pursuit. Generally, when things are going on with like a crime like an armed robbery, that's a pretty violent crime. There are people going in every direction, people are scared, but this citizen took a moment to flag down the officer and say, "It was a blue Ford Tempo, and it went that way." That was all we needed in this case to find the car. We got into a pursuit with it. They ran away once they got into a court, but we captured them. Had they not taken that two seconds to say it was a blue car and it went that direction, we probably wouldn't have caught them that night. And who knows if we would have ever caught them? But that's how easy it is. All you have to do is go, "It was a blue car and it went that way. I'm out of here. See you later." That's all we needed in that case. So that's just one example. Second example is a burglary in progress, August 17th, 2014, 100 block of West J. A concerned neighbor goes to his apartment complexes laundry area and finds that a guy is breaking into one of the coin-operated machines. Some people would rather not get involved. Some people would just look the other way and say, "I didn't see anything," because they're scared. They're scared of calling the police. They're scared of being confronted by the suspect. There's a lot of reasons they don't call us. But in this particular case, this person called us and said, "There is a guy breaking into a coin-operated laundry machine." We get there, she says, "It's right over there. I'll see you later." Our guys catch this guy red-handed in the act of breaking into this machine. It was an easy act. It was an easy, two seconds of their time to call us, wait, and be part of the process of catching these guys because they need to get off the street. They're damaging our friends and neighbors' property. Maybe it's a drug. Doesn't matter, but they are a nuisance and to our community, and they need to get off the street. And that's how easy it is. So I encourage everyone that's listening, that's watching, take the two seconds. Call 911. Call the business line. The dispatchers are trained to say, "What is your name? Where are you calling from? What's your callback number?" You can ask to remain anonymous, and they'll respect that. And that's all you need, just simple facts like that. Example number three, marijuana grows. Boy, our Narcotics Task Force agent has been really busy this year in 2014. I'm just going to show you a couple, or one example over the, over the year. He served seven search warrants at homes in Los Vanos that were found to be illegal marijuana grows. Based on citizen tips, you and your neighbors get tired of these people who are in and out at all odd hours of the night. They're criminals most of the time that are associated with these grows. They make unusual noises when you're trying to sleep. They bother you with weird smells because they're using chemicals and fertilizers, and they're using electricity. But people get tired of it, so they call the police. And in seven of those cases, we served search warrants, we found over 2,000 plants, six pounds of processed marijuana. And equally important is the fact that each and every one of those grows had illegally obtained PG&E. So what they're doing is, they're getting PG&E. They have a bill. They have a, a contract with PG&E. Energy's flown into the house, but they're bypassing the meter. The wiring is hot, and these guys are putting these things together in ways that we shouldn't be doing. So it causes dangers to the house, the property owner, their neighbors. There are a number of reasons why these things are just a bad deal. And all of those cases started with phone calls to either myself or the police department just to report that there's weird activity at odd hours of the night, there's nobody home, there's aluminum foil on the windows, you name it. Takes one phone call, two minutes of your time, and these are the results that we get. We're often asked, often asked about a neighborhood watch. And the process with neighborhood watch is really, we go in as the police department and facilitate that initial meeting and get the ball rolling with the neighborhood. But it is up to the neighbors in that particular area to follow through and keep that process going. The good part about that is, you don't have to have a formal neighborhood watch to meet the needs of what a neighborhood watch is. If you know your neighbors, you know their names, you know their phone numbers, you know their kids' names, you know what they do, if you call each other and say, "I'm leaving for the weekend. Watch my house." You call and say, "Hey, I saw this weird delivery truck. Is it supposed to be there?" Congratulations, you have a neighborhood watch, and that meets the need. But if you're interested, myself, Megan, one of the other commanders will come out and talk to you about starting a neighborhood watch. Okay, the last slide that I have talks about being aware citizen. We did this last year in our, our presentation, and I thought it was pretty powerful. I'm going to do it again. We had 607 thefts, larcenies from, reported in Los Vanos. Those are the basic minor thefts that go on. 129 of those were from a vehicle. If you take the basic steps of removing your valuables from your vehicle, lock your doors, park in a parking lot that's well-lit, or in that portion of the parking lot that's well-lit, you take a few minor steps to improve your chances of not becoming a victim, our crime stats go down 129 by itself. And they're very easy steps to take to accomplish that goal. But to this day, I could go look right now, people leave their doors unlocked, they leave their iPads, their computers, their wallets, their cellphones in their cars, in the darkest part of a parking lot, and it gets stolen. Nothing infuriates me more because it could have been avoided. And now people are out of their money, their valuables, they're subject to being a victim of identity theft, and identity theft is terribly hard for us to, to solve at a local level. So take the easy steps of locking your doors, rolling up your windows, and keeping your valuables out of sight. And that concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have of me.
I will tell you that neighborhood watch is the great equalizer. You don't have to be rich. You don't have to live in a neighborhood where you think all the neighbors are concerned about each other's homes. You have to live in a neighborhood where people can band together and, and, and work together. It is a great equalizer to reducing crime in the city of Los Vanos. And I can't push for that enough, and I can't push enough for the vital volunteers and friends of the animals to, if people have extra time, to start volunteering their time for those two activities. It can help us immensely. It can stretch the arm of law enforcement to a point that we can reduce these numbers even more. Citizens are helping to reduce this number. And I have to tell you, as far as code enforcement is concerned, the numbers are up because the numbers are up. And by that statement, I mean people are seeing results from code enforcement, so they're calling more. And they're asking for services because they don't want to put up with the ill-kept yards. They don't want to put up with the abandoned cars, and, and they surely don't want to put up with a neighborhood that looks trashy. So call for services. You will find out that if you start calling for these services, the people that are, are making your neighborhoods trashy, you're going to stop because those citations get worse and worse. And believe me, no one wants to continue to pay those citations. People are misbehaving, call. The police department will do something about it. Now, if they're not there in a few minutes, don't think that they're ignoring you because there may be more pressing calls that are coming up at the time. But neighborhood watch is a great equalizer and having more police volunteers. You can't believe how much that works. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Chief, thank you for this report. And, you know, when I look back at the traffic fatality for 2013 and 14, to me, it kind of directly correlates with the fact that your officers gave out more citations in that year. And behavior modification works. People start acting appropriately on the road. So thank you for making sure that they do that. Code enforcement. And, you know, I just want to give a lot of compliments to Jason Martin. This young man has crossed over and handled two jobs when he was hired for one. And he's done a remarkable amount of work for our community to, especially at the animal control department, which is where he was hired to, to operate. But with that, would you say that we'd need another animal control officer in the city of Los Vanos?
Don't worry, no repercussions. Answer the question.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Well, if you look back, and I can almost recite this verbatim, when you look back at 2008, when the city was hustling and homes were being built at a frantic pace and everything looked great, we had two animal control officers. We had 10 more cops. We had more CSOs, we had more janitors, we had more dispatchers. And we're a lean, main finding machine, much like the other departments that I work with because of funding. But to answer your question, I certainly won't avoid it. Yeah, absolutely. I could use another animal control officer. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Well, Chief, thank you. We really appreciate it. And continue and, and let us know how we can continue to get the word out, to get citizen help and, and neighborhood watch and whatever else we can do. Thank you.
Yeah, I will say a real quick word about social media. We're, we're out there a lot, trying to do as best we can, as much as we can. So social media is a, is the new wave of getting the word out as quickly as you can, and we're trying to be as, as open to it as we can, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Should have taken a break a while back, but we're almost done, so let's go on to item number 11, advisement of public notices. Assistant Planner Elms?
Yes, we have one public hearing notice. It's a proposed ordinance for farmers' markets. Currently, we don't have any policy or regulations in the farmer's market. Season will be coming up upon us very shortly. So this will be going before the Planning Commission on Wednesday, April 22nd at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. It's my understanding that Mr. Silveira, your request will be on the next meeting.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, let's go on to City Manager's report, item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of quick ones. I want to thank Public Works Department Butch Terranova. He allowed me to go on his shut-off tour last week. If you don't pay your water bill, we do shut you off, and I had never been a part of that process, so I asked Butch if I could tag along with him, and we shut about 10 or 12 people off, and they brought me back to City Hall. But I want to thank him. It was quite an experience. I want to talk a little, just, we've been talking drought a lot, and I'm going to send it over to Mark Faison here in a moment, just for a couple of quick comments because we had a nice conversation today, and I asked him if he would speak tonight just for a moment. But about a week ago, Mark Faison, our Public Works Director, and our Assistant Public Works Director Greg Pimontel sat in my office for about 90 minutes. We talked about water conservation, outreach, and things we're going to do. And it really, it's really pretty clear, there's four parties that are involved in this, the city of Los Vanos, the school district, the residents, and then the top 10 or 15 water users in town, the commercial water users. And Mark's got a plan to reach out to all those guys. They've, they've really thought this through. We do have to reach 35%, not 25% because we're in what's called Tier 4. We didn't meet our numbers in 2013, so we're, we're in Tier 4, which is 35%. One thing I want to steal a little, Mark's thunder is on May 4th, Public Works Department, that week of May, not May 4th, the week of May 11th, the Public Works Department will be out and about knocking on all doors and putting flyers on doors and, you know, talking to them about the drought, and that'll be your one warning. So we are going to get out there. We're going to cite some people. We're taking a little harder approach than we have in the last year, and it's not that we want to be bad guys, it's just people really need to pay attention. And out of the four groups that I mentioned, the city, the school district, the residents, and the water users, it's really about the residents. And Mark and I did have a nice talk today. Mark, if you could take a couple of minutes and just explain some of the things you found out in your course of research and a few of the things that I did not mention, I'd appreciate it.
Well, number one is, thank you. The city is in Tier 4, which is the most, the 25% mandate is statewide, and they go by individual cities to see what you have to do. We're in Tier 4, which is 35%, which really isn't based on the savings from last year, although we only did 7% savings last year. We did have savings. It's based on their numbers of per capita use, so how much water is used per person. We don't necessarily agree with the numbers that they calculated. We're trying to talk to them, but the best we could do is to Tier 3. So we are, we have to do a 35% goal. But let me give you some idea, which is very interesting, is single-family residents use 67% of the water that we produce. Multifamily residents use 5%. That's 70% of the water is used by residents, the residential community. Landscaping, which is all meters that are landscaped, all landscape meters that are red, school district, the city, businesses, anyone that has a separate landscaping meter is 8% of the total water. So to give you some idea what that is, if only the landscaping portion conserves 35% citywide, that's a 3% gain. If only the single, or the homes, the residential saves 35%, that's a 30% gain over the city. Everyone has to do their part, but it's very obvious that the single-family residents really have to do their part. What we're doing on a citywide basis, we are, we are down to watering our, our parks two days a week during only watering hours. Our goal is to keep them, they will be dry, but to keep them alive so they revitalize. It's a very important part of our infrastructure. We met with the school district, and they're working with us on the 35% reduction. Something that should be noted is several of their facilities are on private wells, which are not part of this mandate. They are going to try to conserve the water in there also. The Los Vanos football field, that is on a private well, so it might look a little greener than some of the other areas they do, but they, they are going to mandate the 35% as much as possible in other areas. So what we're doing now with the single-family residents, we're at the point now where we are not warning people anymore. We have changed our flyers, and the warnings have been removed. The state's had a personal call with me about this, that how many tickets did you get out last year, violations? And I said, "Lots of warnings." She said, "What was the amount of your violations?" And I said, "Zero." That didn't go down well, considering we didn't meet our goal. But regardless of that, our fines are still very low. It's not, it's not, it's, we're at $15, I believe, to start off with. Most cities start off at 100. It's not, the object isn't to, to make money or to recoup money from conservation efforts. The object is to get people to wake up a little bit and let them talk to their neighbors about how bad Public Works was. They gave them a fine, and maybe the neighbors will go through, and people will start doing that. We definitely have, there is, there is definitely people in town that are conserving quite a bit, and there's some people that are not at all. So right now, we still look at who, who we've warned, but if it's a gross, if it's a gross negligence of things that have been, some of these things have been in for years. If it's a gross negligence, the, the fines are going after the May 11th, that week when we walk to each individual resident and hand them, that will be the one warning for the entire city. So we will not, we will actually, our program will not have any more warnings after that point. We just, we can't warn and fine with the same staff we have. We're only having one, one and a half people do this, so it's, it's kind of rough. In the meantime, though, the inside, people have to still conserve water inside. We need 35% in the outside of residences, and we need 35% inside. Full loads of watering, shut off the water when you're brushing your teeth, just things that do not wash down hardscapes. That's a really important one. That's really bad. We have to stop our We can't, we have to stop our treated, our potable water going down our catch basins. We, that, that's, that's a major. We do not give administrative fines if water hits the gutter in front of someone's residence and doesn't go, doesn't leave that residence. That, that's just, sometimes that's a problem with the wind, sometimes that's a lot of problems that you can't get over. When it leaves a residence, we start looking at it very intently. And definitely if they're not doing it on the days, because there's three days, there just, there's no watering at all. So those days are very easy to talk to people about because if there's water going on, they, it's not supposed to happen. So we will be concentrating a lot, all the areas are being dealt with, we're meeting with individual, we're meeting with industrial users. A lot of their water is in their industrial process and they're already, they already have recycled a lot of water, but they've also been very successful in the last couple of years. So they're looking at ways to prevent waste in other areas than, than their industrial because that, in their actual product, because they're actually doing very well with their product, which equates to jobs, equates to economy. So, this is where we're heading. So you will, you, I, no doubt you will be getting, we get them all the time. When the fines are started issuing, people will say something about it. But I think we get more calls now, "Why haven't you fined this person?" than we getting the opposite, so. If there's any questions, I'll gladly try to answer them.
Mr. Silveira?
So, Mark, the fine is, it starts out at 15, one, $5, correct? And then it progressively goes up from there?
Yeah, it goes up to, I have it here so I don't blow it like last time.
Mic, your phone, Mike.
So it's to $30 and $75. So even on the third violation, we're still below almost every city.
And so could you explain, and I, if I understand it correctly and what I've read, we didn't issue many or any fines last year and so the state now is, they're, we have to send them how much, they're, they're tracking how much we're fining people, correct?
They're tracking, they knew how much that we were giving warnings, but now they want to know the fine too.
And so if we're not, if we don't meet our compliance, what happens to the city of Los Vanos?
Well, it, there's a whole range of things and, and they haven't said exactly what. It can go to a fine of $10,000 a month, but even more than that. And this is why we have to find, we have to start putting administrative fines out with no warnings and, and start getting people to react because they can come in and they can mandate your water bills going up in price immediately. As a, as a, you know, we have a graduated tier, but a lot of cities have just doubled that or tripled that to start off. They can also come in and mandate that the fine is $500 first time, if you're not getting close. 35%, 35%, I'll be honest, I think it's going to be very, very difficult. But if we're in the high twenties to low thirties, we can deal with that a lot better than the 7% we had last year. And that's really what we're aiming for, we're really, really going out hard. Our people are working not just the work hours, we're getting them over at 2:00 in the morning. Because what happens is people are cutting down to two days a week, but they're watering twice as often.
Yeah.
That totally defeats the purpose. They've got to cut down that one day, don't, and then cut down their cycles also. It's both.
Mark, our guys will also be out in the middle of the night, can you talk about that for a little bit?
Well, we're, it kind of depends on how many water breaks, but yes, we'll, we'll have people out every now and then during the middle of the night, especially on no water days, especially on no water days. And we also have going out at 5:00 in the morning because people tend to stop their watering at 7:00 because that's when our staff gets on. The other thing we will do, we will have water patrol, magnetic signs on the cars that are doing it, so it's a, it's a, being out in the public. We'll, we'll be at the street fair, thank you to Republic, they'll share their booth with us, it's very great. We'll be at the May Day Fair, thank you to Republic again, and to the fire department and Ron Brandt. They're going to let us double up with the fire department and, and hand out brochures. So we're going to be out there and we're trying to also get a flyer into this, all the school children's hands before school's out, so it goes home. So we are, we're doing a mass, but it's, it's interesting, one fine seems to get to like 50 people. And also, thanks to Gary, we did get on social media, we're not good at it, they're very good at it, so he took my, he took my press release and stuck it on social media and we've gotten a lot of input from that. Thank you. And that's what we're doing for. So we think we're advertising well, it's, it's just a matter of, we're going to get a little less green this summer, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, let's go on to city council member reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Freya.
Thanks, Mayor. Let's see, 72-hour prayer chain is Monday through Thursday next week, is that right? Okay, and that, and where's that going to take place?
That takes place at every house member in their homes.
In the homes?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So, praying for the city next week. Also, street fair Saturday, and then you have pony rides this year too. It's going to be kind of exciting. We got our shovels ready to, for, for the ponies, we got some extra shovels for the ponies. And then choir concert next week, Wednesday night, we're doing, Los Vanos High School Choir is doing a spring concert featuring music from the Phantom of the Opera, Henry Lloyd Whopper's Phantom of the Opera, lots of soloists, a lot of great music there. At St. Joseph's, $5 a person. We appreciate community support, come on down, have a, have a wonderful time, listening to these kids saying they're quite good. And then finally, there's a new ice cream shop in town. And if you haven't tried it, I, I've tried it too many times, but you know, it's very good. Surf's Up, they're over on, on Pacheco Boulevard. So, by the time we get these new, new businesses coming in, we try to support our local business and local families running these. Money that stays local, stays local, and stays local in taxes, stays local in jobs. So we want to support our local vendors. And have a great week and let's see, we'll see, won't see you again until after May Day, so have a great fair.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Let's go on to Mr. Silveira?
A few things. First, I want to say thank you to Francisco and Eric, the two lone soldiers that, that hung out through the whole meeting and are listening to all this valuable information that I hope you share with, with your family and friends on, on water conservation because I think it's, it's so important and it's, and it's, it's going to be a team effort on everybody. Everybody has to do their, I, I, listen, I'm, I caught myself a few times and I've been telling myself, you know, every little bit helps, every little bit helps. And, and you're right, there are people out there conserving. I have a neighbor of mine that she catches all of her bath water and she uses it to water stuff in her yard and, and you know, so every, every little bit helps. So I just, and I think that the, I hope that the fines are enough. I, I hope that, you know, it's, it's more of, it's more of a monetary warning, I'm going to call it, at $15. But maybe that makes them wake up and, because, and I, and I think what you're going to see is, is people, you know, your neighbors are going to be the ones that are telling on you. Because I'm driving, I'm watching, I'm watching my neighbor, I get up in the morning and I, I see what, when I see water running down in the curb there, along the gutter, I stand to my, I'm looking to see where that's coming from. So, I think that's, it's, it's coming and we all need to do our part on that. A couple of things, May Day Fair, April 29th through May the 3rd, you can buy your discount admission and ride tickets at the fair office, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and those are on sale until the Tuesday, the 28th at 5:00 PM. Also, I'm going to keep reminding everybody, blood drive, donate for Debbie. It's, it's a memory of Debbie Pereira, who lost her battle with cancer a few years back, but there's a memorial blood drive, I think this is the fourth annual, and that's from 3:30 to 6:30 in the O'Banion Building at the fairgrounds. June 8th, June 8th on that, Monday, June the 8th. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Just a couple of announcements, see, the street fair that's coming up, the Rotary is going to have a pancake breakfast and it's going to be $8, it'll include ham, and that's because Mrs. Lewis wanted that. And, and so, so if you'd like to buy tickets, you can buy them from any Rotarian. And also, I've seen a number of shopping carts, they have the reduction in town, thank you. And if you see a shopping cart, I would ask you to call Public Works and, and report it, report the location. This, this last, this last week, I was in Monterey for a CalCog conference and, and some of the, the information that was brought out, they're talking more about applications and phone applications. And I know this is not the time to ask, but at some point, we need to talk about how we can develop apps for the, for the general public with the smartphones and how they can report things a lot quicker for us and maybe not going through the phone lines and, and see what we can do for the citizens. And I thought about one thing, your shopping carts for one thing, because a lot of people just don't use the phone. The generations they talked about of the, of the new phone users, they don't, they don't make phone calls, they do texting, they, they, they work with social media. So at some point down the road, I, I hope we could find a time to, to maybe have, maybe find some smart high school kid that would like to develop apps for us. And Eric, that could help you with the, the, if someone's missing a cart or, or a can for the, for the garbage and where shopping carts are located in order to, to help clean up our town and how we can report things that, that basically would take time and take time away from a dispatcher who has to answer these calls. So, I don't know if it's possible, but maybe we can move in that direction if the council thinks it's, it's something we should move into and move into the, the next century with the, the phone apps. Because they were, they were really touting these at the, with Caltrans and, and, and the different municipalities of, of how people conduct and generate business. And, and what they do to keep abreast in order to, to make the best use of time constraints that they have within the city. So, for now, though, if you see a shopping cart, please call Public Works and report it. And they will have somewhat, someone is here three or four days a week to pick up those carts. And if that doesn't work, then I'll bring it back to the council level to see what else we can do to, for more beautification projects in town. So with that, we will now go into closed sessions and conference with legal, legal negotiator, or labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, city council manager, Eric Carrigan, city manager Carrigan, city attorney Vaughn, city clerk, human resources officer, director Maloney, finance director Williams, legal counsel Tufo, employee organizations, Los Vanos Police Office Association, LBPOA, Los Vanos Police Sergeants Association, LBPSA, Los Vanos Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association, LBPDCSOA, and Los Vanos Firefighters Association, LBFFA, and unrepresented miscellaneous employees. And B, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, title city manager. If there's anything to report, we will do so at the, when we return from closed session. Good night, everyone.